8, 2024. Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mrs. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Quadriano?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Bivens? Mr. Thompson?
Here.
All right. We're going to move to close session. Your roll call here.
Make the motion.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quadriano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Yes. Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens? Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quadriano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Yes. Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Can you get a roll call?
Mr. Bivin. Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
The crew.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board. We've got some special students here tonight. These are November High five learners. They're each gonna come up and introduce themselves.
I'm Isaac. I'm Isaac Patrick, and I'm five years old, and I'm in Tennessee.
Hi, Isaac. Can you wait right here, and we are going to read a little bit about your nomination, and then you're gonna get the whole thing when you get your certificate later, okay? So, your teacher says Isaac is such a wonderful student, Isaac's always very involved helping classmates make good choices and offering support on his own, to be a kind friend. He starts each day, I see it right there, with a smile, greeting everyone cheerfully with a "Good morning and have a great day." Academically, Isaac is excelling in all other areas. Isaac's an overall fantastic student. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Joely Hee Madis, and I go to Colorado Elementary School, and I'm in fourth grade.
And Joely, could you scoot right over here so you can hear all the great things your teacher had to say? And we're gonna read part of it, but you'll get the whole thing later with your certificate, okay? I'd like to recognize Joely for the incredible positivity and kindness he brings to our classroom each and every day. No matter the circumstance, Joely always manages to find the silver lining, and her enthusiasm for learning is truly contagious. What stands out the most, though, is her heart. She's consistently inviting anyone without a friend to join her in play, and gives her all and everything she does. Joely is a shining example of what it means to be a great classmate and a kind-hearted leader. And that was from your teacher. Congratulations. Joely is a shining example of what it means to be a great classmate and a kind-hearted leader. And that was from your teacher. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Calvin. Kindergarten. Miss Hayden.
And Calvin, do you want to hear what your teacher, Ms. Wilkinson, had to say about you?
Yeah.
Calvin has been a great helper since the very first day of kindergarten. He has always followed directions in helping others pick up spilled materials, pushing in chairs, and comforting others who just need a friend. It's great job, Calvin. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Arna. I'm in fifth grade, and I go to Monta.
And this one is from your teacher. I would like to nominate Arna for her outstanding character. She consistently shows respect towards her peers and adults, creating a positive environment for everyone around her. Arna's positive attitude and genuine care for others make her a role model in our school community. Her thoughtfulness and willingness to contribute, to listen and to contribute generally or greatly to a collaborative classroom environment. She truly embodies the values we strive to uphold. Congratulations.
My name is Logan. I'm a freshman, and I go to.
Logan, here's what your teacher had to say. We're excited to shine a spotlight on Logan for his impressive accomplishments and positive impact within our school community. Logan brings an infectious energy to every activity, consistently participating with enthusiasm and encouraging his peers to engage alongside him. Logan has a special gift for making those around him smile, brightening our school atmosphere by uplifting spirits. Your hard work and positivity make a difference in so many lives. Congratulations, Logan.
Hi, I'm Noah. I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Heinemann Middle School.
Noah, did you just have the Heinemann Marlowe game? How did it turn out?
We lost four games.
When I heard it, was it a really good game, Noah?
It was a very good. And there's another one. Right? Play them again. All right. Noah, go ahead. Hear what your team had to say about you.
Noah is one of those students that everyone just likes to be around. He can regularly be seen helping others and laughing with his peers. In addition to his kindness, Noah is a hardworking student who is challenging himself through our accelerated classes. He always makes his best effort in the classroom, and if those qualities aren't enough, Noah is an excellent musician. I'm going to have to say athlete, too, right? So Noah is an example of personal hard work while supporting others. Congratulations, and keep up the great work.
Hi, my name is Malik Carter. I'm a freshman. I go to Huntley High School.
All right, Malik. Here is one. Let's see which. I don't have which teacher. We'll find this out for you. Malik is described by his teachers as a positive, engaging, and insightful student who demonstrates leadership and academic excellence. Stands out for his polite and personal demeanor, always greeting others with a smile and genuinely listening to them. Malik's work ethic and creative thinking shine through and honors all the classes, while he consistently models responsibility and sets high expectations for himself and his peers. There it is. He is recognized as the leader of a boost morale and is actively involved in the link crew and freshman advisory. Everyone who nominated you, thank you. Make a positive impact on everyone around you. Congratulations. And we would like to thank our parents for the audience for raising these incredible individuals who shine in our buildings and our district each and every day, and we cannot wait to see them through their journey here at Mr. Form 58. So you guys want to come around? We have a certificate for you. Now we've got a little bit of gap here because everybody's lying down that way. There we go. Oh, perfect. All right. One, two, three. And it's... Oh, there we go. One, two, three. Congrats, guys. Those of you in back, if you want to come up, you can.
Please.
You guys just hang out. All right, moving on to number five. Our comments. We have two. Don Smolinski.
Good evening. My name is Don Smolinski. I'm the head commander and current finance officer of Huntley American Legion Post 673. I'm here tonight to, not sure how many of the board know, just exactly how much working together that the district and large veterans organizations in the country are post here work together. So I'd just like to outline some of the things that we do with the district. We are one of the sponsors of Huntley High School Athletics. Attended a couple football games this year. I'm pleased to hear that we were announced over the loudspeaker twice during the game. It's very nice to do that. Legion sponsors school awards each year, giving awards to deserving high school students and to middle school students in each school, outlining those who exhibit characteristics of patriotism and character in community. We also, the post has provided four $2,000 scholarships to deserving students in the district. We also sponsor an oratory contest each year. In fact, we had the competition last evening. There were three students who competed in the oratory contest. Legion oratory contests require students to give a short speech, a prepared speech on the Constitution of the United States. This is also a fine topic where they have to come up with a five-minute speech there. Three young ladies who competed will be moving on to a district competition. Our post provides a $500 award to each of them. We also, when they go on to a district, division, state competitions, even national, if they should be so lucky, and again, further awards can be made for that. Each year, the high school, we get many volunteers for our annual Vet Fest event. Those of you who have attended our Vet Fest event in June each year. The football team comes out and helps us set up. They also have some of the young ladies help out with some of the refreshment, you know, hold there as well. We appreciate any of those students. We always need volunteers, and those who need that community service credit, we'd be happy to accommodate to do that. The High School Athletic Booster Club just recently had a bingo event at our post, and it was very successful. Hopefully, they did very well with that bingo event. There's also a, we sponsor a Boys and Girls State program. That's a youth and government-type program that takes place during the week in the summer at Eastern Illinois University. We had two boys from the high school attend in 2023, and one girl attended in 2024. We have no restrictions on that. We'd be delighted to send many boys and girls to that program who are interested in attending. I wanted to thank a lady, this is Laura Martin. She's worked very closely with us with the oratory contest, scholarships, Boys and Girls State. She's been a great asset to us and helpful in this way. Also, a side note, there are certain staff members who enjoy the hospitality of our post after school. Appreciate their stopping by and enjoying our facilities there. Also, on a personal note, I wanted to thank the district for offering this year the Silver Paths for senior citizens. I have taken advantage of that personally and attended a couple football games. I'll be going to basketball games and theater events both at the high school and middle school. And finally, I just wanted to thank all the board members here, that they have school board member in Page County. I know what a difficult job, challenging job you have. Thank you from the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Frank Pidal.
Good evening. My name is Frank Pidal. I'm a junior at Huntley High School. I'm also one of around, I would like to say, one something. I couldn't get specific. There's more. Students at the school who have to use an accommodated first-class bathroom. I personally use the bathroom for social and emotional reasons, but mainly because every year I've attended Huntley High School, I've faced physical and verbal threats going to the public bathroom. The current situation for the staff bathrooms at school is that previously there were two that this group and I were able to use. But now it's just one. The repercussions if you go into the other. I am safely able to use one toilet at all in a school that doesn't even have to set a work fee online because of how big it is and it continues to grow to be. I can't speak on the behalf of every other student who also has to use this bathroom. I can only say what I know in my experience and what other people have told me. But the way that this bathroom has been set up in the past with just the two was hard enough to make it to class, like with enough time to learn and like do your work. That was really hard to begin with. But the way it's set up now with just the one bathroom, it's become way harder and way more time consuming. And also, it's just put students back in the same position where they have to risk their safety to just use the bathroom. It's, I'm sorry. It takes me five minutes from wherever I am in the school to even get to the office where my bathroom is. And a need of pad is five minutes at our school. That's how much time we have to even use the bathroom. We're expected to get there in one to two minutes, use the bathroom in a couple minutes, then come back within that five minutes. It takes me the whole five minutes to get to the bathroom. And then it takes me usually 10 to 15 to even to get to use the bathroom because of how many people are using it. And, I'm sorry. Most of the time that's wasted on using the bathroom isn't even on actually using the bathroom. It's getting too fine a bathroom that's usable within the whole entire school because there's only one toilet, and maybe the nurses will let you use theirs if you go in and there's nobody in there. I've been scolded by teachers many times for having to use this bathroom as well. I've been sent to my dean for having to use this bathroom. I've been told I didn't deserve to use this bathroom and that I can use other bathrooms, but I choose not to. But I feel like I could very much argue the same for teachers and staff members who are able to use these bathrooms just as much as I am or so many other students who do. The difference between me and teachers who use the bathroom is that these teachers don't get pictures taken of them when they just want to use the bathroom. They don't get called autistic or gay or made fun of for any of these things for just meaning to use the bathroom. They don't get it. They don't have groups of boys waiting just to hurt them in the bathroom. They don't have groups of girls waiting just to hurt them in the bathroom, which is something I and many of the other students who also use the bathroom for whichever reason have experienced. I don't think you guys can make that all stop. I don't think you guys can make people change. I don't think you guys can change the world, and I don't expect that. However, it should not be so hard to do something as necessary as going to the bathroom. I know a lot of people don't have to think about whether it's safe to go into the bathroom that they're going to because they never had a reason to question that. But that's something that me and these plenty of other students have to think about every time we even ask our teacher about going to the bathroom. A lot of the time, this is the one time a day where we're completely unsupervised and scared of what could happen to us in the bathroom. And this, I have talked to Dr. Veale about this, and I have definitely sat down and talked to each other about it, and I felt really hurt. I felt really hurt by him. I felt like the others said, I felt that we were actually all on the same page. And I had other staff members at the school come up to me and tell me that he talked to them about our conversation, and that I brought up a lot of good points. And I really appreciate that he said that, and he felt that way. I feel like it was a productive conversation. However, there was no solution that came out of it because he's also just working with what he's been given, which is not enough. There's 20-something now who use the bathroom. When I started, I'm pretty sure it was only a good group in the 10. And Dr. Veale has said that when this all started, it was a good four or five. This number is just going to keep getting bigger of people who need to use the bathroom because it does protect their safety. And this system where it's just one bathroom, not even one bathroom, one toilet that is usable for 20-something kids, isn't working. And it didn't even work when it was just the two bathroom system. I, that's all, I'm sorry, I have to cover this. That's all I really have to say about that. And I hope that none of what I said came off as disrespectful because I don't want it to. I want this. it to. I want this to be a productive conversation. I want something to actually, I want something to actually change in the safety for everyone, like you guys all want, I'm sure, too, to matter, you know, or have something change, you know?
I'll let you know, I appreciate that you spoke with administration and with high school administration and someone from here, we will definitely be getting back to you.
Thank you.
All right, number six, revision and adoption of the agenda. My motion to adopt the agenda, as presented. Is there any questions? Peter?
Hi. All right.
All right. Number ten, attendance reports. Ms. Lumber.
Sure, the first is just a few updates. I know that we will go ahead and post up there the updates with attendance and all those things. And looking at last month to this month, still hovering around ninety-four and a half, ninety-five percent presence on an average daily attendance component with that. We have not seen a drastic change one way or the other in any of our grades or any of the reasons whatnot. We do know that we're probably going to be hitting a little bit of a dip here as we go into cold season, flu season, those kinds of things, and absolutely understandable in making sure that students and staff are homeless and not feeling well, and also in just hearing from staff and from students and from parents, some pieces of information that have been beneficial to look at how we can tweak. We know that we're embarking on kind of a new way of looking at some of the attendance and the coding and all of those pieces, and so many of district office staff, as well as building administration, have filled in some of those calls and some of the changes. I think one of the most important things we want everybody to know is that absences do occur and that all students do have that opportunity to make that up, you know, that it's not a zero if you are out regardless of the reason. There may be a timeframe of when something needs to be turned in based on that, but there's definitely a misnomer out there that we're hoping that has been kind of squashed a little bit with that component there. But some really great things happening in the classrooms and around this attendance campaign there with that. I do want to note with that, one of the things that I've added, too, is also looking on a month-by-month basis, what is that percentage looking like, and I'm throwing in there the enrollment. So from our sixth-day enrollment, we're up six students total. And so we'll kind of distract that year or month-by-month as well, so I'm adding that to that. Now, we may have had more new, but we may have had some out, so overall, the six students there. Strategic planning, just giving an update with that. Initial strategic plan communication went out to all staff and families early November. Tomorrow, we're really excited to host a student group comprised of students from our K-2 buildings all the way through light. There will be a number of district office administration who are going to spend a couple hours with this group of students to get feedback about the portrait of the graduate and the portrait of a learning environment, and really looked at how to get information even from our youngest learners all the way through. And then this is just one component of getting some of the students' feedback with that, then being able to see how we can get some of that information out, whether it's through lunches. Nico, you're in the back, you kind of talked a little bit about, you know, are there opportunities in the commons area to get more student feedback based on some of these pieces because we can't have all students, you know, participating in the event at the same time. Future student feedback, as I said, will be gathered in a variety of levels and forms. A staff and parent community survey will be shared during parent-teacher conference, again, to get some feedback around those competencies and other components with our three portraits or frameworks. December fourth, we'll be sending out invites here for parent meeting members and some staff to review the initial gathered information from our surveys and student forums to participate and build a kind of draft about those so that then we can bring them to the board for feedback from all of you, sending those out to the community. Again, our goal is to have those completed and shared in January so that when we kick off the more traditional, if you will, sessions of the strategic plan, we've got kind of sent in our guiding light of the things we want to keep in mind as we're making our goals and KPIs and components with that. And so we will be sending invitations, I say invitations, it's kind of like what we did with PTAC, people would like to be involved, they can reach out through our Google form, and then dependent on, we'll make sure that we have a robust group from all of our stakeholders, from all of our buildings, and making sure that it's a divided, staggered group out there to have some feedback on that. So some exciting times, and it should be a great day tomorrow, and we look forward to sitting down in a more casual environment and talking to our students and getting their feedback. So thank you to the community members who will be participating in that, and to the students who will be joining us tomorrow. So more to follow, and that should be some exciting updates next month. Did want to share, as, there's a variety of different monitoring cycles, if you will. Last year, we completed our comprehensive review that happens every five years with the state board, it's the regional office that comes out and does all of that, well, as part of the U.S. Department of Education Special Education Programming Monitoring that goes on. All ISBE added a cyclical monitoring model that all districts will go through, and it's over a six-year period, and we're in cohort work, and so we're really excited about this. Miss Gill has some information with that, has set up a team, it has to be a team of administrators, general education, staff, and special education staff to look at a variety of things. So right now, the team is set and going through webinars right now about what that process will look like. There'll be some IEP compliance reviews, programming things, all things that the team was doing anyway, a lot of those align with our KPIs. And the other part is not just a review of what's going on with recommendations that will come out. They actually have a lot of support that would happen both on the gen ed and special education side of professional development that we can tap into. And I believe you guys have looked at some of those, and people have done that, again, on both sides, making sure that we are doing what's best for all students here at the district. So there will probably be updates periodically through the years we go through this cycle, but just wanted to share that, we're cohort work, and we're up and running, so there we go with that. And then, lastly on this piece, is just a reminder of that parent-teacher conferences are coming up, not next week, the week after, and again, these are excellent opportunity for our families and our schools to continue building that collaborative partnership. So we hope to see as many families are able to partake in parent-teacher conferences and partner on the education of their children. We do know that some things come up at that time, and if those don't work, that doesn't mean that's the only time that we can work together, so to reach out to the school and your teachers and span that constant communication. Lots of other reports and wonderful things going on, but those were some of the highlights there. Any questions? All right, we'll go on to donations. A couple donations here, Spooky Buddy Families donating $420 to the Huntley High School Buddies Club, thank you for that, and Michelle Ferrante, $250 to the Huntley High School recently. So again, thanking both of our families. Typically, it's a lot of our organizations and businesses out there, and here's the families coming together and supporting some of the wonderful activities that we have at the high school, so thank you to all of those this month for that. And then, we've got, tomorrow's a very special day. I know we already had a public comment at the end, kind of share some of the thanks and gratitude for the hard work and the dedication that the school board does on a regular basis. But tomorrow is school board member appreciation. So add to this, we have a small token of appreciation there along with a certificate, just honoring, the certificate is honoring each of you on School Members Day, which is tomorrow, for dedicated leadership and education and continuing service to the children of this community. And so then, bear with, a little little treat and a nice little hat for the community, but hats off to you, your dedication and support truly top the charts. Thank you for everything. You guys truly are the best. And I know that there's times that are more difficult when we have meetings, that maybe there are things going on with work and home and all those, and balancing that act for all of the students and the community and the families, you know, can sometimes be a juggling act. But the dedication and the hard work and the commitment that you have done for all of our students and our community definitely is appreciated by all of us here. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that. So next up, we've got Assistant Superintendent Dr. McCrindall.
Good evening. Can I just have one update? It's about our Illinois report card. It was released officially October the 30th, and last Thursday, we did engage in some data conversations on our curriculum workshop on student achievement, taking a look at our state data, and we wanted to give a summary just of where we were verbally. We are very proud that all of our schools were in the commendable category, right, what we received for our sum of designation. The state of Illinois has five different categories that you can fall within, and commendable is a second to the top, exemplary would be the top amount. And as a reminder, the way that you get into the exemplary category is they line up all of your school's total points, and then they divide them line at wherever 10% is. And if you happen to be at the 10%, you make it an exemplary. If you don't, you're commendable. We were within four points, three to four points in many of our schools of where that cut score was, so we're going to strive hard to keep working to move that needle. But we do have quite a lot of areas to celebrate. Our elementary and middle school, they calculate those scores together, K-8 into 1. Literacy scores did grow 6% this last school year, which is exciting. There's been a whole lot of work and focus on literacy, and so huge kudos to our students and our staff for that hard work, and we're seeing that continue to rebound. We actually surpassed where we were before the pandemic, which is when we started some of this work, already not happy with where we were with that and knowing we needed to make some changes, and so we were proud of that. At the high school level in literacy, we did see a 3% decrease on the SAT, and so the high school, their school improvement plan, which we were able to review last Thursday as a group, does focus a lot on some of the ACT prep and also how we're transitioning our curriculum to kind of meet those needs, as well as we have just, you know, approved studies to be adapted for ninth through 12th grade, and so we're hopeful that some of those materials will help us continue to do some improvement in that area. We know it needs to be a continued focus. For math, we did see at the elementary and middle school level a 2% increase, so a small increase, didn't quite make the 3% to 5% strategic plan goal, but we did grow, so we're continuing that work. This is the first year that all of our K-5 buildings will have started our new math program, so we slowly roll that out, so we're hopeful to continue to see, hopefully, a higher rate of growth in there, but we are excited to see that move forward. At the high school level, we did see a slight decline of 1%. It was like a point, point six, so it rounded up, decline. And so we were excited that it was not as big of a drop as it was the prior year, but we know we need to continue to work and focus on that, and that's what our fit plans and our, we have a math action plan that's going to be presented to the board in December, just showing and highlighting some of the work we're doing with math. We do know that math is something across the state and across the nation that we're seeing as something that is a decline, and we're slowly seeing that our boards compared to the state boards are getting back to where we are widening our spread, which is positive, or not growing at a quick enough rate than we want to, so we want to keep working on that for sure. We did already share this, but attendance, we did have a huge drop in our product F&amp;P rate last year of, we went, decreased to 18.6%, which is a seven-point-two-point drop, but this year, we, that's very encouraging. We think this continued focus in honor of using F&amp;Pism will remain a priority. Attendance is extremely important because at the K-8 level, first of all, we need kids here similar in periods, but when it comes to our ratings with a K-8 level, 20% of the rating is attendance, and so we really want to make sure that we have kids here and present, and at the high school level, it's a little less, but it does help that. So when we look at that, we were three to four points away from exemplary, sometimes attendance could be that thing that kind of pushes us over, and so we're hoping that this remains a priority. And then just in our equity lens, when we take a look at all of our data, we do see that our former EL students, so these are the students who have passed the access test, which means they met the proficiency level, that they actually are outperforming our all-student average in many of our buildings, and that's exciting. So once students have exited with that EL services, they're maintaining and they're actually outperforming where everyone else is, which is sixth grade to the work that our teachers and our students are doing. However, our children with disabilities and then our secondary EL subgroups did show some decline in some of those areas, and so this year, with a part of our strategic plan goals, continues to signal a need to focus on what we can do to provide those supports, specifically at the secondary level for our English learners as well as our children with disabilities, and that's for the work that we're guiding into this year as a part of our strategic plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
I have one.
Yeah.
I know that you're looking at the averages and how they outperform what the state averages. I would like to be able to see, though, like, what some of our neighboring states are, and my reason for that, especially at the high school level, is for our students at the high school that choose to go on to four-year college, they're not competing necessarily against students in Illinois, they're competing against students outside of Illinois. So I think that that data would be helpful, especially at the high school level, to see how we prepare our students appropriately to compete with students outside of Illinois. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. McCrindall, with that. We've got some native data when it's working at national, some of the others that we pulled, some of the, maybe comparisons to state, try to pull as much as we can together with that, knowing that we'd be comparing apples to oranges because standards and cut scores and all those might look a little different, but we can absolutely take a look at that and some of the needs of course as well.
Absolutely. And I thought it was real helpful, too, as a curriculum, that went really well. So I just wanted to say that, kudos to the whole team, putting that together, a little lot of work, and that was, was really helpful to digest a little easier instead of just looking at a meeting here or whatnot. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
And every way that was there.
Yeah, you can do a fantastic job, and I think, like you said, it was great to be able to engage in conversations around the data, and then specifically, we like being able to show you school improvement plans and what are the direct stages we're doing in our building to help them connect there, so thank you for that.
Right, and so you have the parents, and then you're walking around with Adam and two going over them, and they're playing things to me that I would like, you know, be a newer student and whatnot, I'd like to hear what they have to say, and that's really good and helpful.
And I think one of the things with that, both Mrs. Gill and Dr. McCrindall and your whole team, looking at that, while we can't replicate that in a presentation mode, we will definitely make sure that the presentation that was also shared is uploaded as part of the board packet so that it is in there with, probably from last week, it is on presentation, and so again, maybe even having a link to this one as well, tied into the board package so that parents can also take a look at that. Again, it's hard to replicate the activity part of that, but to be able to share in some of the data that you did, so thank you to your whole team.
One last thing I do want to say is that, I know that the work that has gone into this is our students, that they're really putting a lot of effort into trying to improve themselves all the time. The elephant in the room was always, this is what we're struggling with as a district in the country, with our students being out of classrooms for a year or two. And I appreciate all the work that the students have done, but on top of that, it's the work that the teachers and the staff have done to have to continue to move forward while addressing things that had slid backwards for so long. And so I just want to say thank you so much to the teachers and that we respect them and the work that they're doing, and this shows the amazing staff that we have here that are led by this district that we're able to make these improvements for our students, so a big thank you goes out to them, too.
Absolutely.
I did have a question. Can you refresh my memory and help the public to understand how, I know this is digging into the weeds, but how is that kind of data calculated and calculated annually for the school report card? What goes into that?
Absolutely. So there is a pie chart, and I'm actually going to pull it up on top of you just to make sure I tell you the different parts. But on that pie chart, the state of Illinois have identified specific areas that when you add up all the points of each of those components, it then equates, you're equals the summative rating. So at the elementary level and middle school level, the K is 1, student growth on state assessments is 50% of that rating. So for literacy and math, that means from year to year, what if a student, let's say, Mr. Torre, you receive a 750. Student growth on state assessments is 50% of that rating. So, for literacy and math, that means from one, from year to year, what if a student, let's say, Mr. Torrey, you received a 750 on your assessment, and so did Mr. Thompson, and then next year, you drew 25 points, and he drew 40 points, and the goal was 40, we get full points for growth for him, but not for you, because it means the number of state assessments for that. So, that's a huge part of the elementary K8 percentage. The high school has the same little pie chart, but their 8% is the percent of graduation rate, the percent of kids who are graduating from high school within a four-year period. We do get credit for kids that go up five years, six years, up to, I think it might be seven, I can't remember the picture. Six seconds, yes, four, five, and six, thank you. And so, you get lesser points if it takes longer for that. So, that is, that's the two big parts of that. And both of the pie charts include proficiency. And something that we have typically been able to do as a district is stay ahead of where the state proficiency levels are for literacy and math. This year, we did not do that with math this year for high school. And so, something that we're a little concerned about, so we need to make sure we get that back up there. But proficiency, we only get 7.5% of the 100-point score. And so, while we are considered proficient by the state of Illinois, it's not 50 points of that pie chart. The product F&amp;Pism plays into that. The surveys that all of our parents and students take and staff take, the five essential survey on an annual basis, we give completion points just for students to take that survey from the fourth through 12th grade level. And then, there are some, they call meta indicators, and they're different based off of K8 and 912, but it includes some of the college and career readiness, opportunities to pass fine arts, et cetera, into those numbers. So, then they take all of that data, and then they give you points on it, they weigh it based off of different parts, and then you try to get a final score. And then, that score is what gives you your rating.
And now, the student growth, like the example that you gave between me and Mr. Thompson, is that a state target, I guess? Or who sets that target? Is it the state, and then the district tries to meet the growth for every student for that particular rate?
Yes. So, yes to both. So, the state sets a target because they look at across all of the state of Illinois and say, every student that got a 750 should grow 40 points. And then, they go out and say, in Huntley, maybe 50% of our kids who got a 750 grew 40 points, so then we would get, you know, 50, half of whatever that percent would have been. So, a little bit of both, but yes.
Okay. Just trying to understand some of the background of what goes into it, because when a number is tossed out, like what you presented, we've, we dropped two points, we grew 6%, whatever the numbers are. I understand that they are what they are, but I want to understand what goes into those numbers, so that, you know, are we looking at what those components are, so that the easy points of a response rate, okay, that's nice, but really, it's about the student growth. So, it's nice that the state takes that into consideration in some way. However, that's not where the meat is on the bone, so to speak, in how to, how to gauge student achievement.
Yeah. And then, to that point, Mr. Torrey, the state gives you an all-student average, and then they break down each subgroup for the same way. So, then you're able to see how our students with disabilities are doing, and then how our students that go to EL are doing compared to that. And so, they give you the same pie chart breakdown with just those subgroups compared to that. And there's many other subgroups, but those two.
And when you look at these data points, do you look at this, yes, you probably do both, just look at seventh grade against seventh grade last year, or sixth grade as compared to sixth grade last year? But then, there's the, the class of 2030, how did they do as they moved up grade to grade, and how did the class of 2031 do, and the class of 32, et cetera? So that you can see how the class is doing themselves as they move from grade to grade and what their growth rate is.
Yes. So, what you're describing, we look at each grade, and we look at cohort data as well. So, the cohort would be how you get from third grade all the way up through eighth grade. One of the things that we are going to have to take into account this year is they are shifting the norms once they decide what those ratings are. And so, we're going to have to compare data based off of our proficiency score a little bit to see how we compare to prior years, because we don't want to just have an inflated sense of the norm shifting or going down, to know how it's going to shake out. To get optimism to hope, we want to kind of keep that going. But we do look at both of those parts. One thing, Mr. Bittman, I believe, asked on last Thursday, was can we try to start tracking from junior year and all the way down from third grade up to junior year? Because the state just showed the ACT, the ACT and the IAR are aligned more than the SAT was. And so, we're hopeful we'll be able to start to see some of that trajectory. Before, SAT was very different, I would ask them in IAR assessment. And who knows what ACT will be compared, but they're saying it's better. We'll be able to track that.
Thank you for using better terminology than what I had.
No, good question.
No, thank you very much.
All right.
I'm just going to, real, real quick comment, most of the questions, nothing you don't know, Dr. McCrendle, but, you know, highlighting, I think, again, science has been pretty spectacular. I think that's exceptional. Some of the scoring has been going on for several years. Wanted to spotlight that. On the downside of things, and again, we know math is a little bit of a weak spot tonight, just spotlighting, thing that jumped out at me is the eighth grade with Algebra I passing. And that, we're actually, we don't usually perform below the state average on anything. We're performing below the state average on that item. I'm sure that's what's translating also up in the high schools. Obviously, you're all aware of it, but, you know, with the good, spotlight the bad. And then, the one last item, and I'm not picking on the teachers, but it's in, in sequence with the, with our students of being more mindful of attendance. I'm just, kind of surprised at the percentage of teachers who miss 10 or more days. But when I looked at historically, that number's been all over the map, both good and bad, and this actually, the most recent year, wasn't horrific in the continuum, but it's still, I think it's in the 75, 76% of, you know, it's like 24% of our teachers miss 10 or more days, which, again, we have FMLA leave that kind of impact that, I'm sure. But I just want to, you know, we want to encourage our students' attendance, we also want to encourage our teacher attendance, too, because they make a difference, being
Thanks for highlighting the science. I should have, it was on top of page two in my title down there. We are very proud of the science focus as well. We're a little nervous with the ACT shifting to the science assessment being a part of that, how that might change those ratings. And so, we're hopeful that we continue that 74% of super high, we typically are the first or second, and when we put our compare levels up for that. So, you're absolutely correct there. And then, Mr. Quagliano, with the eighth grade algebra, the percent of eighth graders passing Algebra I. We have engaged in conversations with some of our eighth grade, our seventh grade, sixth grade, eighth grade gifted teachers, as well as our counselors. We've again, had those conversations about what criteria are we using to identify students appropriately to take Algebra I in eighth grade, and how we're going to do, how we need to maybe adjust some of maybe what we're asking. And so, we're hopeful that there might be something with how we're identifying kids mixed in there as well, and make sure we put the right kids in the right classes.
All right. Moving on to number nine.
Thank you very much. I have two updates, 9.1, 9.2, the monthly fiscal update. I'm only going to highlight one item. You know, we're always continuing the effort essentially with operational efficiency to bring in additional resources to the district, additional revenues, additional grants or rebate opportunity. And I was having some discussions with ComEd recently about the possibility of doing a point-of-sale rebate on the four electric buses for which, well, there's a purchase order in the system for the board to approve tonight. And with that rebate, they would cover, well, 100% of our local share. And so, historically, how that has worked is we fill out a very intensive grant rebate form, and we ask them for the rebate. And then, if we are so selected to receive the rebate on a first-come, first-served basis, they'll send us a check. But under this new method, we're looking at a point-of-sale type of rebate, and they would work directly with the manufacturer. So, part of the reason you're seeing that PO tonight for the electric buses is so that, well, we can get into the system on this rebate, so that we can 100% cover our local share. And that's about $88,000 per bus, or $350 plus thousand dollars. So, hopefully, the four electric buses that the board will approve tonight, and then subsequent action item, will cross the district, well, nothing. So, we will continue to keep the board apprised on that, so I did want to highlight that. And that is the reason why we are bringing those electric buses to PO to you tonight, so that we can get that into the system for first-come, first-served on the ComEd rebate. So, do not want to miss out on that opportunity. That's under monthly fiscal update. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have on the update.
For the, for the electric buses, does that grant cover additional charging stations that would be needed?
Yes. And the buses are anywhere from six to eight months out, potentially. Once we place the order, we'll understand what the potential build update would be. And so, we have time to continue to work on which chargers we want to move forward with. But yes, the Volkswagen grant does cover 75% of the charging station cost, and we'll bring that to the board at a later date.
Okay. So, that's, that's a separate.
That would be separate, and I would be working with ComEd on that as well, because there may be some rebate opportunities on the chargers as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Great, great question. Thank you as well. I will jump over to 9.2. That is your September financial executive summary. You know, similar to last month, similar to July, we continued to trend as we expected for the first quarter of the year. Typically, this time of year, we see a lot of timing, timing issues with revenues and expenditures, right? Usually, at the beginning of the year, we pay for a lot of capital expenses, right? Over the summer months, we've got those capital projects that we recently did. We pay for property and liability and work and comp insurance upfront, so purchase services are higher than, well, a 12-month average of what you would expect. And typically, the first quarter of the year, state and federal funds are lagging a little bit. So, we have provided you the financial executive summary. Nothing to be really alerted by, other than health insurance. But the good news on health insurance, you know, we always have these ups and flows and ups and downs on claims. The August claims of $1.3 million were well the highest we've ever seen, and the month of September came down a few hundred thousand dollars. So, we're hoping in the next few months, that continues to come down, or at least flatten out a little bit. We are trending over budget for the year, three months into the year, but we won't know until, well, we know, but we will continue to monitor that line item with the board. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the first quarter, September 2024 financial executive summary. Thank you.
Moving on to number 10. Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, Ms. Gill.
Hi. We had a really exciting October. The last time we talked, we were talking about the events that were coming up, really supporting inclusivity and accessibility in our community. So, just some updates and highlights from the events we hosted in October. On the sixth, we had our American Evil Century Shopping Experience, which was well-attended by families and a great dedicated staff at American Evil, and really appreciated that experience. Wanted to share that following that success and the post that we made on Facebook, the exploring was then reached out to say, can we do the same thing? And so, we were just really excited that sometimes it takes just doing one thing at a time, and I'm just really excited. So, sure you'll hear more about that in the near future. On October 8th, we did our Rad Community Event. We had over a dozen local businesses and organizations who came in to talk about ways that they are promoting accessibility in their organizations and businesses, and also gave us an opportunity to receive feedback from our students and families about ways we can make the community even more accessible. So, it was very well-attended by our businesses and partners there, and just wanted to publicly thank them again for participating. We did a shout-out on Facebook as well, but wanted to, again, thank those partners. On October 8th, we hosted the Authors for the Way to Inclusion, which was an opportunity for us to learn together with families, staff, community members, and we had over 200 participants in the event, either virtually or in person, to begin the conversation about our next steps as a district in ways that we can promote more accessibility for all students. The second update I have is around the lease agreement with Visionary Property. You remember, in July, we agreed to approve a lease agreement with Visionary Property. We're aiming for a mid-September start. And while that is slightly delayed, we really are pleased to report such significant progress has been made. And we, things like curbs and asphalt, the curbs are in place, drive is ready for asphalt. They don't think it's been installed yet, but it looks so cool. I know, Kevin. The sprinkler system is installed. Interior finishes are expected to be completed by November 22nd. Our deliveries are on track and should have arrived. I know Mr. Pinky went over there today, and we're really monitoring everything very closely. So, I want to thank Mr. Altmer and Mr. Lindquist for the support and monitoring all of those steps. We're working with the ROE to make sure that we get our occupancy and all the things, all those things, so that we can open up. We anticipate beginning to, the ability to use the site for the January 2nd semester, and we're hoping that we'll, we have tentatively signed an open house for December 9th, which will include a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I think Ms. Lumber, if she has it already, is trying to coordinate with all of you folks, and certainly, we will have communication out. We're working with our communications department on the communications thing. We're just very excited about all of the updates and wanted to highlight those for you. Any questions?
I have one.
I would be sad if you didn't. I feel a little left out here.
On the asphalt, is that something, have they closed the asphalt pits yet, or all of that, or?
We have a question. Turn it a little bit.
Yeah, no, no, no. My question, my question revolves on whether they'll still open it if the asphalt isn't put in place. I would suspect yes, but I don't know.
I would imagine so, but the plant is still open.
Okay. I know it's getting close to the point when they do shut down for the season. I just wasn't sure if we've crossed that threshold yet or not.
I don't think we will.
Okay.
Still have it done in time.
I got Mr. Rencasik on speed out. We could. So, thank you for the update.
All right. Number 11, Director of Communications, Ms. Mark.
Good evening. So, first up, we did, just so the board knows, we did have five FOIA's that were fulfilled this month, and just wondering if anybody. Better? Nope? Try that again. Better. So, first up, to let everybody know that we had five FOIA requests this month, and those have been fulfilled, and just wondering if there are any questions or comments on those? If not, then in the board memo, I just highlighted some things that are happening right now. This has actually been a really fun week, I would say, full of community and collaboration. So, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. First of all, today, we had a really great community event, and lots of the people sitting right around here participated in it. It's called Leadership Greater McHenry County Education Day. And we did this last year, too. But this was an opportunity to invite, survey four community leaders in from around the county in different sectors to learn about public education in the county. So, they get kind of a deep dive on K12s and even higher ed education here, and we hope to be event. So, the morning is here in the district, and that consisted of a superintendent panel, and our superintendent here participated in that, along with a superintendent from McHenry School District 15, and then Dr. Lazinski from Community High School District 155. We also had a CFO and board member roundtable discussion late in the morning to talk about education funding. It's a great opportunity to let the public know, you know, some of the challenges that go along with that, also the role of a board member, and the role of a CFO, and how they work together to help us, you know, meet student needs. So, that was kind of a fun thing. And then, right in the middle of that, we did probably the most fun thing, which was to go out to our schools. And we toured some classrooms at Chesapeake this time, and Martin. Last year, we went to a different campus, but everybody really seemed to enjoy that and to watch learning in action. They saw five different classrooms at each building. So, that was super great, and I'm so grateful for us to have that opportunity, and the teachers, too, were willing to have us today. So, that was fantastic. And then, earlier this week, on Tuesday, we had the Game of Life. That's something that the chamber, the Huntley Chamber has done, where they come in and they have various stations set up around the gym at the high school for students in personal finance class. And they get to meet with community volunteers who talk to them about their budget, about the cost of life. They're given kind of a scenario, and then they figure out, you know, oh, I'm married, I do this, it's my job, and the students kind of select their own jobs. But they, they spin the wheel, and they figure out, oh, I've got four kids. And what's that going to cost? that going to cost me? And, you know, so it's just such a great, what does a car cost? What is the, what do phones cost? But, you know, all of that stuff, housing. So it's just a really, really great thing, I think. And there's lots of, lots of eyes are opened after that. But the Detroit even was there and participated in that. Seems we appreciate that. They were always looking for volunteers. So that was really special. And then Monday was Veterans Day, and we had lots of celebrations for veterans in our schools. And I was at one at Marlo. That was just fantastic. But I know our other schools are celebrating our veterans, too. So it's been, it's been a special week, and I did just want to say thank you to all of you, because you'll round out the week tomorrow with still more appreciation. And truly, we do appreciate you and your commitment to the district. Any questions for me?
I'm gonna jump on something that she said. Working with the Huntley Chamber for the Game of Life, it is exceptional to have their participation in that event. I know they have business lives and businesses that they run, and to give up and volunteer some of that time to help our students and open some of their eyes in those real-life choices and situations that occur, that's tremendous that we do that kind of partnership with them. So I've spoken to the Chamber President on Tuesday, but I wanted to give a public shout-out to the Chamber overall, for all their members for participating in this and giving up part of their time to help our students. Tremendous.
Sure, I think that's really important. And a lot of it is the behind-the-scenes work that the Executive Director Nancy Fingers is doing and with her team. But yeah, I agree with you. It's no easy to pull off, because there are, there are quite a few stations in there. You know, there's quite a few pieces that go along with that life. So it requires a lot of, a lot of volunteers and a lot of organization, and yeah, big shout-out to them. Thank you.
Yeah. No, they were exceptional, and that participation is greatly, greatly appreciated.
Great. Thanks.
For the, for the opportunities for that Game of Life in the Chamber, it would be nice if we could, since those businesses and those business owners are giving up their time, could we tag them on the post that we put out there just to potentially give some recognition to their businesses so that people understand how much work they're doing?
Yeah, I think the whole thing has changed shape a little bit, where we're covering topics more than we are certain businesses. So I think the, it's morphed a little bit. But it's a great thought, if there are specific ones that are truly supportive that are coming on behalf of their business. A lot of times, we have volunteers who are able to donate their time, come and just talk about these general categories of life. But there may actually be some.
If we had an insurance agent that was speaking about insurance as an expense, that it would be nice if we were able to promote their businesses as part of the Chamber.
Thank you for that. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it would be a nice way to offer us to give back to them. And I will just say thank you so much, and thank you to Marlo for putting on an amazing Veterans Day program. I've never attended it before, but it was very moving and very touching for me to be, I was honored to be asked to be there. And it was really wonderful to see some of our youngest people and then some of our oldest people in our community being able to engage. I thought for the students, it's a great opportunity for them to actually learn how to communicate with people, because they're on their phones and in front of computers all the time, and they actually had to talk to people. So it was a really great experience for them. It was well-done. So the whole program was really wonderful. Great, great way. And I had a lot of feedback from the veterans, that they were just so touched and honored to be remembered and have a chance to be thanked for their service.
Thank you for recognizing that, too. And I agree with you. And I think the other piece of that is the students are learning how to interact with the adults that are there and how to serve. And like Richard Reader, Director of Food Services, talks to the kids and gives them some tips about food service in general. And he said this really helps to prepare them for jobs that many of them will likely have in high school, working in the food service industry. So they're getting some of that, too. So it's really kind of special. Thanks.
Good program.
I know. I was there, too. I was gonna say moving. Fantastic. And I've never been either. So and what was neat, I heard the chatter as I'm walking out with some of them, and the thank you cards that the students made. I thought that was really special, too, because they said, wow, I don't hear this too often. And it really meant a lot to them. And I walked out like, oh, it was really special. And then two other events, I know the American Eagle, I know you just talked about that, Ms. Yel. That sounds really neat. And I, the Spooky Buddies, I've never been to that, and I know we haven't been to session since then. And so I didn't realize the work that went into that. And then all the classrooms and the students, I was just really impressed. I was like, whoa. I mean, I could have laughed at like 10 times and see something different every time. And the students are really energetic and really encouraging. And I thought it was really special. So yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number 12, Operations and Maintenance, Ms. Lindquist.
Hi. I have no additional updates added to that, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have on the ones I presented to you.
I was hoping you were just gonna say Chesapeake Chiller.
Chesapeake Chiller.
There you go.
Say that 10 times, sorry.
Moving on to number 13, Press Report. I don't have anything today, but I was going to move to 13-1 for board discussion. Anybody have anything they want to?
I have one thing. I wanted to suggest that the board members would get access to, like, any newspapers online, Huntley News or North West Herald or Daily Herald, just to have our own account. We would need on those. That'd be a nice one.
Looking at having a board subscription, and we have a district subscription. I'm up to our subscription on that.
I don't know how much is this, sorry. I don't know how much a subscription runs, so I don't know what the additional cost is.
I have my own. It's like 130.
It's been a very, it's been a very buy outlet. I know the My Huntley News is about $50 a year, so that's fairly inexpensive. And the North West Herald, I'd have to check on. Those are the two that we have. And the digital subscription is much less than the print edition, and so that's what we have as well. So I don't have exact numbers on it. I certainly could get those. I'll share them with you.
Can we just get one more one? I'll use it.
That's cheating.
Oh.
That's just practical.
Practical. All right. Moving on to the minutes from above here. I'm gonna be able to move them to the next meeting. Any objections at all? Moving on to Action, I have here, I forgot. 14.1, Personnel, Doctor's here.
Nothing to add from the discussion in closed session?
Moving to approve the District of State Personnel Report for November 14th. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Cray?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Biffen?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Oh, 14.2, Elementary Literacy, that's our material approval, Dr. Chris.
All right. So this evening, we have before you the remainder of our elementary literacy benchmark education materials approval for you for grades one through fifth grade. As a reminder, we did place these on 30-day review back in May, and we approved the BOSS rollout of these materials. And we have teachers using these materials right now in our dual-language classrooms and in our bilingual classrooms. We were able to, I think, Ms. Wiley, you asked about some training for our dual-language staff. They were all able to participate in training, either the last week or the week before, but one of those two weeks, but in the last couple of weeks, which has been, it was received very well, to be able to understand how to use our materials the best way. We are hearing positive feedback overall with the use of the slow roll of these, so we're excited. The one piece of feedback that I think I did share last time is there's a lot of materials in there, but that's something that you get with any type of curriculum, that teachers are appreciative to not be creating them themselves. So while there's a lot to kind of go through, that was there. So before you, we have our six-year proposal. The total is 800, I just lost it, 838,598 24 cents for six years. That would be all of the consumable, all of the remote, the online components, everything that we would need to be able to do this through the 2031 crazy school year. And so we bring up before you this evening, and the quotes are in the packet. We were able to get quite a good deal on our digital subscriptions specifically knocked down because we did our slow roll. And then we also were able to get quite a lot of professional learning. All of it was complemented, so we didn't have to pay for any of those pieces. So tonight, we have that before you.
Yes. So have you gotten some feedback from the teachers on this?
We have, absolutely.
Okay. And it's been positive?
Yes, totally, positively. Ms. Mohn actually led a meeting before our last board meeting. It seems like a long time ago. It was literally that evening, and 100% of the teachers said that they, of the ones rolling out, said that they are appreciative of it, that they are supportive of it, even tonight in our, we have an HCA meeting, and this Lombardi era on there as well. It was shared that people are receiving this positively, that it's been supported. Our dual-language staff are feeling like it's a positive use. And then I think the best thing about this is that, I talked about our data earlier, and that we need to be looking at our subgroups. What this material does is provide those supports for our kids or EL, as well as our students who have IEPs, which allow our teachers to focus on teaching the students versus creating and modifying the curriculum for them. And so we have gotten lots of feedback across the board, and our plan would be to do the training actually at our Institute Day in January for our staff, and then continue to follow up with them throughout the spring to be ready for implementation.
Okay.
Yep, thank you for asking.
No, thanks.
So with the, so with this being a six-year contract, I mean, this, this to me means that we are making commitment to this particular curriculum, which is different than what we've done in the past where we've updated curriculum on kind of a rolling basis. And that causes confusion, I think, for students and parents, mostly for staff, because they get very settled into a curriculum, and then we change it again. But with a six-year program or contract, I mean, basically, a kindergarten student has to take them through almost all of their elementary with one curriculum without that being changed, unless there was some reason for us to have to change our company, our own business, or we're finding. So this will give us better data, too, because we'll actually be able to measure this curriculum for six full years, correct?
Absolutely. Good to bring that up.
Yeah, thank you.
And we do have it fully budgeted within our current local budget. We worked through those numbers. So what was projected, there's no extra dollars are defined. It was allocated within our projections for this year.
Yeah. My concern is that you're locking it in for an extended period of time. So you've got to make sure that, that the curriculum is solid to lock it in for that extended period of time. Because if there's, something goes squirrely or another program comes out, you're kind of fixed and not being able to pivot as needed. So it's a double-edged sword. I understand that. From a consistency level, this provides that consistency. But the flipside is, until another product comes along that is better, shinier, whatever the adjective is that's correct, you know, you're locked into a six-year contract.
Dr. McPriddle, do you want to talk a little bit about the unit approach and study approach, how that was, still building on what we, what these approaches, the literacy over the last number of years. However, this gives the consistent resources so teachers aren't having to scramble and create. And so it still builds on that literacy base, that philosophy that we utilized for a number of years and had PD on. But then again, so hopefully, it's not just the new, next new shiny thing, because definitely understand that. So it's really been tried and true. And we know that this approach to literacy has worked for our students, but to be able to have all of the materials and the resources for all of our students and staff is what's kind of given that little edge, so that they're not scrambling to create and try to find.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm so glad you brought that up. So when we were building out the units of study that interdisciplinary approach, we found that we needed the sonics support for our students. And so during COVID, we actually, we bought workbooks at home with kids. The author of those workbooks is the author of this program. And so there is some consistency in between. We feel very confident. Our literacy scores are moving up with this, that this is the approach that makes sense, that connects to the Illinois literacy plan and all of those parts. And then the interdisciplinary approach, all of the units are around signing social studies, which is what we are definitely used to. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah. No, and thank you for the additional detail. You're more the expert than I am in this. I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing our diligence as well.
No, I appreciate that. Good question.
Motion to approve the 838,598 in 24 cents?
14.
I have 14 on here. For the benchmark advanced materials.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Quagviano?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Biffen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right. Number 14.3, FY '24 Audit, Ms. Altmer.
Thank you very much. Administration, please present the fiscal year 2024 audit report. So in your board package, you do have a digital copy. I have these nicely bound leather copies. Well, they're early now, leather. And look at the partner of Evan Marshall and Peace, our partner, Mr. Chris Scollit. I'm gonna ask him to come up to the lectern. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a few things before I hand it off to you, Chris. But Chris will talk about the quality of the audit, as well as our opinion, material findings, and, well, anything else that the board thinks is appropriate. So he'll touch a base upon a lot of that. But, but I wanted to share with you some of the highlights from the audit, because I know this was last year, a while ago. But the completion of the audit for the fiscal team is a big deal. It takes a long time to close out the books, and Jenny and Tom Rodriguez and the whole team up there did a great job this past year preparing for this and dealing with, well, auditor questions left and right during audit week. So I want to thank my team for getting through that, and certainly thank the Evan Marshall and Peace team for getting it, getting through it as well. But the things that I did want to highlight, so you don't really have to read this whole book, are, I'm gonna start with some of the variances from budget that are, were really the driving factors behind the $905,000 operating surplus that we did have within this binder. If you recall, the district budget is $1.6 million surplus. But please note, that $1 million surplus was also because, because we did reduce the insurance budget by $1 million in the last, right at the very end there, when we approved that FY '24 budget. So we did, you know, we knew, or we expected that we were going to go over budget quite a bit on health insurance. And we did, but if you recall, there were some reasons why it didn't end up as unfavorable as it did. So we'll talk about that in a second. But some of the notable, notable variances from budget were as follows. Driven by a favorable economy, if you recall, the district's earnings on investments for all funds totaled $2.5 million and exceeded budgeted revenue by $1.5 million, and last year's actuals by $1.43 million. So that was a very favorable line item. Driven by prior year adjustments at the state level, combined with a slower economy, the corporate personal property replacement taxes fell short of budget by $268,000, coming in at $866,000. If you recall Medicaid, Medicaid revenue of $488,000 fell short of budget by $87,000, primarily driven by the state changing their Medicaid reimbursement formula. We talked about that. Purchase services were favorable to budget by $75,000. Supplies and materials were favorable, were also favorable to budget by $108,000. The big line item, salaries and benefits exceeded budget by approximately $1.1 million, driven by the unfavorability in substitute teaching. We talked about that when we did this year's budget of $350,000. Extra duty, which was also unfavorable to budget by $310,000. We also talked about that when we had the FY '25 budget. Supervision, that was $165,000 unfavorable. We addressed that line item as well. And then health insurance, well, health insurance was trending and would have been $1.4 million unfavorable. But if you recall, we had two adjustments come in, well, in the end hour in the last month of the year, and those two adjustments totaled approximately $1.1 million. $721,000 was the rebate, the RX rebate that, well, we should have received in fiscal year '23 from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we also received a $400,000, a little over $400,000 aggregate stop-loss rebate, or I should say rebate. Because we exceeded the aggregate stop-loss, Blue Cross Blue Shield ended up cutting us an additional check of over $400,000. So in the last month of the year... So in the last month of the year, we received $1.1 million from Blue Cross Blue Shield, bringing that health insurance deficit to budget down to $300,000. All said and done, we ended up with a $900,000 operating surplus, putting our fund balances at the end of the year at $38.47 million. So $38.47 million is approximately 29% of the FY25 budgeted revenues. So we're 4% above where we want to be on the policy of having a 25% fund balance. So that is something we will continue to monitor in the out years because we would like to keep it, well, at least there. We don't really want to keep dipping down closer to 25%. Also, and we talked about this as well during the year, at the end of the year, you know, we had a strategic planning goal to get back to recognition status within the profile score. And we did do that, achieving a 3.8 whereby, whereby we are back at the recognition status. So with that, it was, it was an excellent year. We got through a lot of capital projects. A few of them are worth noting, just so we can recall what happened. One of, one of the major ones included the pavement improvement and asphalt replacement project of the Transportation Department post slot, the DX cooling replacements at Marlowe Middle School. That was over $1.1 million. That was a big one. The updating of the Huntley High School foods lab. I know they're appreciating that over there. The exterior window replacements for which, on the circle at Huntley High School, we were having a lot of water leaks on the circle, so that was taken care of, as well as the bus purchases. So from a capital standpoint, those were the capital dollars that were spent in FY24. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Schallert. I want to thank you again and your team for doing an exceptional job. And with that, the mic is all yours.
All right, thank you, Mark, and good evening, Board of Education. I'm going to be pretty brief if everyone wants to go home. And this is not interesting to everyone, but maybe to me, Mark, and then Mr. Quagliano. But, you know, financial audit overall, and I've been trying to explain to boards more like what actually I do, because I think some kind of people don't realize what I'm in here doing for two, three weeks on. And so a financial audit provides an independent and objective assessment of the district's financial statements and internal controls, which helps regulators, stakeholders, and the general public to have confidence in the accuracy and reliability of the district's financial reporting. As an auditor, I have to adhere to multiple professional standards and ethical guidelines throughout the audit process to maintain independence and objectivity. So two big things, independence and objectivity. Audit went really well this year. I did not run into any audit reporting or internal control issues. The district had zero audit findings. And the district's quality of work performed was thorough, organized, and timely. All internal control testing over compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, specific grant agreements noted sounded effective internal controls, like Mr. Altmeier just said, the district went back to the highest score you can receive from ISB, which is recognition, which is, which is great. And then also, you know, I've been an auditor for many years here, and the district really has been financially consistent with strong commitments to continuous improvement, financial health, and fiscal responsibility, something that I don't consistently see over the 30-plus school districts that I audit. So this is a very busy time of the year for me, a lot of board meetings. But, you know, it's always good to come to a place that the people that actually do work in the business office care and really commit themselves to the entire audit process. And Mr. Altmeier does a great job overseeing that as long as, as Jenny also too. I know this was basically her first year overseeing her own work, and she did a really good job. So I want to thank Mark, Jenny, and the entire business office for being timely, responsive, and detailed during this very lengthy audit process. So with that, I'll take any questions before I head.
Yeah, we tried to make it worth your while, but I don't know if they have anything for you this year. Everything is pretty straightforward and again, as far as how we performed the budget. Everything was there except for, like you said, the little, it was health insurance at the end, which we all became very much aware of, so, which was fortunate from that end. So again, we appreciate the time and effort your firm puts in. And then we appreciate the time and effort our fiscal office puts in on this. Things are a pain in the ass, no doubt about it. Pain in the ass to do, pain in the ass to get ready for. So appreciate everybody's time and effort on it. I have a quick question, very quick question.
Sure, no worries.
I am curious, how much time do you, does your firm spend on site at the school district versus other school districts in general?
So like, we're here, so me and another team member, we're here five days. Another team member comes one to two days for preliminary work. And then the report writing, final audit, work paper review and completion, that takes me another week, I'd say.
Okay.
In terms of other districts, some smaller districts, it's three days, another couple days to write the report. But since the size of this district, I'd say on a firm level is kind of comparable to like almost time to sign up, like a district with stop 200.
Okay.
There's just a lot to get through, a lot of state federal grants, a lot of different reporting, Mark, I think that's kind of cruel, which is only a district that does that too. So it creates a little bit of extra work for us because we have a lot more spot checking to do, but it is a lot more work for someone like here than it would be for a school district.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. I move to approve the FY24 audit report and results from Evans, who is in peace.
Second.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bivin. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Thank you very much. As we do every year, we ask the board to approve the official levy hearing. And regardless whether or not we need to have a hearing, well, we have historically always had a hearing. And that's called a truth in taxation. And the truth in taxation is this, if a school district is proposing to increase its aggregate levy, the amount for which we're asking for property taxes from the community, and we're proposing to increase it by more than 105% of the prior year's aggregate extension, we are required by law to actively have a public hearing and a notice of a public hearing go out so that everybody knows that we're having this levy hearing. And in prior years when CPI was, you know, 1.6% or 0.7 or 0.8 or 0.1, well, because of transparency, we, you know, we don't take property taxes lightly to the community, the increase of property taxes lightly. So regardless of all that, we would publish a levy hearing and we would post a levy hearing. So, well, this year, as, as last year as well, with the new construction and CPI at 3.4%, and the ballooning of the levy, if you recall what that is, and we'll talk about that in the next agenda item, we are proposing to publish the levy hearing and hold the levy hearing in December as we always do. And so this is simply a memo to the board asking you to approve the levy hearing on December 19th, 2024. And with that, I'd be happy to add, attorney, question?
I move to approve to hold that levy hearing, December 19th, 2024. Give a second.
Second.
We'll call. Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bivin. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Right. 14.5 preliminary tax levy, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Also, as part of the required processes, that we do present a preliminary PAC levy to the Board of Education 30 days before the levy hearing, or a month before the levy hearing. And so what you have in front of you is based on the preliminary EAV and new construction reports for both Kane and McHenry County, as well as the documents. And this document may not change too much from next month, but we want to give the board a preliminary insight as to what the administration is recommending. So administration is recommending extending the 2024 levy with the increase of 3.4% of CPI in accordance with property tax extension law limitation. With the tax extension calculated, using that 3.4% rate for levy year 2024, which is bills paid in 2025, excluding new construction, the district will extend, ask the community for $2.73 million of additional operating taxes in accordance with PTEL. Now, every year we receive, typically in the months of late October or November, we receive preliminary EAV and new construction reports from the counties. And so this year, we received our preliminary EAV report from both Kane and McHenry County. And it was very interesting in that while new construction came in at $45 million, last year we were at $31 million. And we all know that we have a lot of residential growth within the community, both in Kane and McHenry County. But what struck me was we had about $18 million of commercial property in Kane County. While we're finally starting to yield some commercial property in Kane County, up and down 47, and it's primarily two properties, but the big one is the 15 million Venture One property. So that's a property that's been built and you may see it when you drive by down Route 47. So at $45 million, that expected to bring in additional $2.1 million in property taxes to the district. And that, by the way, has absolutely no bearing and impact on the rest of the community. It's favorable to the district because this is new construction, new property tax dollars, primarily driven by the commercial property in 47 in Kane County, as well as all the other new properties being built across the street and all of the other residential developments that we have throughout the taxing district. So that's good news for the district because we know that based on that five-year plan that we looked at, we know what our risks, risks were. And down the road, two, three, four years from now, things were going to become very, very tight. And I do want the board to recognize that, well, you know, we don't take asking of the community, right, an increase in property taxes. We don't take that lightly. But at the same time, we're asking the board to approve a revenue stream that is a known revenue stream for next fiscal year, actually for this fiscal year and next fiscal year, as well as every year in the future. But what we don't know is, well, we don't know where the economy is going to take interest earnings. We don't know where the state of Illinois, and we all know the state of Illinois is, well, they've always been in a little financial crisis. I think the federal government failed them out with SIR and a lot of other federal dollars previously coming down the pipeline. But there is no guarantee that the state will have enough fun to set that $350 million aside. There's no continued guarantee that we will receive large amounts of corporate, corporate personal property replacement taxes, right? There's not a lot of guarantees on all of those other revenue line items that we have kind of performed very favorably on. So that is why it's always been administration's recommendation to, to ask for that CPI increase so that we can continue to do the things that we need to do for students. And so that is no different tonight. I don't want to get into all of the EAV details within Kane and McHenry County, because I'll do that at the levy hearing. You have the memo in front of you. I don't expect much to change. Within this preliminary levy, we are also ballooning this levy. And if you recall, a balloon of 1%, we do that because if the new construction numbers come in higher, we need to make sure that, well, when we are requesting our levy, that we're requesting enough to cover any additional new construction that may be missed. Now, we're not expecting that new construction number, it's pretty high as it is. It may come down a little bit, but, but if it does come in higher, we need to balloon our levy, ask a little more on this process so that, well, we don't leave money on the table for the new construction, for the commercial property owners, or, or, or anything of that matter. So historically, we have always ballooned at 1%. And by ballooning at 1%, I believe that would cover us for an additional $19.2 million of new construction, which I think is a very safe number. And that has historically been what we have done with the ballooning. I will end with this, and then I'll also make a comment on something else that I think is very important. With the extension increase of 3.4%, with it combined with an approximate, and if you recall, we have, you know, bond and interest every year, that's part of the property taxes that the community pays. Well, our mortgage, if you will, our bond and interest is going down a little over 7% next year. And that decrease in bond and interest combined with the increase of CPI at 3.4%, right? With a homeowner with a $300,000 home, we'll see an approximate $97 increase to their property taxes. We always share that, but we always note that exclusive of the 3.4% taxpayers should be aware that individual bills may go up or down based on, well, individual assessments as determined by the township assessor and/or fluctuations of apportionment between Kane and McHenry County. In a perfect world, if everybody's home went up or down by the exact same percentage, they would expect approximately a $97 impact if they had a $300,000 market housing home. So did want to share that as well. What I want to end with is I, you know, over the last six months, especially with the approval of the 2025 budget, Mr. Bivin had, had made a commitment and has talked about, right, trying to, trying to make sure that, well, we can survive essentially with a 2% increase in overall property taxes year over year. And we're really close to that 2% breakdown, meaning that with a 3.4% levy combined with a 7% decrease in bond and interest, we're, we're a little over 2% in what we are extending, what we're asking for from the community, a net of new construction. And so what I'd like to bring forward with the board's approval at the next meeting, when we present the levy hearing, is options for the board. Additional abatements, debt abatements, similar to what we did last year, if you recall, we abated $1.1 million of debt abatements in prior year. And bring options to the board with additional debt abatements, maybe from $100,000 to $400,000, right? And we will outline what that impact would be, but currently, approximately $125,000 debt abatement would bring us down to that 2% threshold that, well, we've been kind of talking about. Over the past year and even the current year, we've, we've had a lot of impact fees coming in. We've had a lot of transition fees. We've done very well on that line item. In fact, we've been very favorable on that line item. And I think it is administration's recommendation, or I should say, we would have no problem, I would have no problem, of extending an additional debt abatement, whether it's 100, 200, or 300, upon the board's approval, next month, at the board meeting at the same time, essentially at the same meeting that we approved the levy. With the board's approval, I could have that ready at the December meeting for discussion and approval if, if so chosen by the board.
So is the expectation then that at the December board meeting, you would be coming with options that we would be presenting as well as the abatement? Because typically, it's been done in different meetings. We've done the levy and then an abatement. We'd be combining those two together.
Correct. So that, so that there's a little more transparency to the community, so the community doesn't have to wait several months to find out truly what potentially the impact to their tax bill would be. The idea is that we would try to get that done all in the same night.
I would also like to, I mean, I know that Mr. Bivin has talked about trying to get to the 2% threshold. I would like to see an option potentially even more aggressive, where we could go below that 2% if we're coming up with options, because I'd like the public to be able to really see what those different options are, the impact to their, to their budget, and then the impact to us as well, if there's an option for us to be able to do that one as well. Just, just, so if, if we're going to do it, which I think is a great idea, and we're going to do the abatement at the same time, let's just put everything out there all at once instead of doing piece to piece essentially.
Okay. Couple things real quickly, and again, why we balloon, balloon because the actual EAV won't be known until February, March of the following year, and we have to do the levy in December. So that's why ballooning occurs. So just so everybody, there's always a way to get what you guys get, you know, because people always think that's what we're going to get, and that's not what we're going to get, but we do it for protective measure, just because you don't know.
Yeah, and that's final EAV as well as final new construction.
Correct. Number one. Number two is in regards to, again, I know Mr. Bivin had circulated some information and his thoughts. And again, the one, one item, I think, Mr. And again, the one item I think Mr. Bittman doesn't always grasp is the ability to just pick 2% and try and come up with a levy number. That doesn't work, okay? It has to be done, effectively has to be done through a combination of, you know, taking our levy, in this case, normally taking the CPI, full CPI amount levy, and then doing this through database. If you try to do this through just purely limiting your levy, you are affecting not only the current year, but future years availability of resources for this district. And it's a compounding effect that if you do it the way we've been doing it for many years, we don't affect our opportunity to capture those real estate, the regular operating rate dollars. We can control this through the property tax abatements, which we've been extremely effective at doing for many years. And I do not disagree with his desire and his goal to get to 2%, but I want to make sure that it's done the right way. And I firmly believe the right way is through still doing the full CPI levy request, but then also working with, and I have no problem with that abatement proposal being done simultaneously at the time we're doing this in December. That I don't have any issue with at all from that standpoint. I also want to point out, you know, people try to, you know, they try to finesse this thing and they start, oh, can we get it to 1.9? You know, if you look at what the actual savings is to a local taxpayer to do that, the little, the one tenth of a percent as far as dollars, what it means to us versus what it means to an individual local taxpayer, is about five to 10 bucks, all right? And so you're nitpicking for five and 10 bucks to try and save the taxpayer an extra five or 10 bucks when it has, you know, a definite impact to our educational process in our district. So while I respect trying to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, at some point, you got to look at what are you really saving them, okay? It's, if you start sitting there trying to grade these stuff down, it becomes not very meaningful to the taxpayer, but potentially is meaningful to the district. So I want to point that out, that when you're going to ask Mr. Altmaier to do that, and I don't have a problem with what you're asking for, but just understand, you know, we can also show you that here, what you're looking to save the taxpayer might not be more than a couple bucks.
No, and I understand that. I'm looking at it from a taxpayer perspective that McHenry County is one of the largest tax counties in the state of Illinois. So it's very, it's expensive to live here. And I think we're all aware of that. Illinois is a very expensive state to live in, period. And when we continue to tax and tax and tax, it does cause stress to the homeowner. There's an unpredictability. We're a desirable community for two reasons. We have an amazing school district and we have a very good hospital system. That's why people are moving out here. You're not moving out here for the parks. You're not moving out here for the businesses. You're moving out here for those two reasons. So my concern though is that with all the new construction that we're doing, we're not adding to our enrollment necessarily. You can go back and look at our enrollment that we presented a few months ago at a couple other board meetings. And our graduation rate for what's going on for 2026 is about 700, and we had about 485 kindergarten enrolled. So when we look at the cost, if we continue to increase our tax and we're continuing to bring in more revenue, we're going to have to start to look at where we're cutting back because our schools just aren't growing at the rate that they were before. So that's one of the reasons why I want to have that option is to be able to look and say, yeah, we still want to be a destination district. We still have bills to pay. We still have salaries to pay. We still have operational expenses. But looking at the enrollment going down, I don't know honestly if this new construction is going to be able to add to our enrollment. These homes are very expensive that are being built here. And they're beautiful homes, but are we seriously thinking that double income, no kid families are moving into this community and then starting families? I don't think that that's necessarily being reflected in our enrollment, and that could change. But just looking at what we, the enrollment decrease going down, that's why I wanted to be able to present that to the homeowners.
I think that's one of the KPIs that we'll have. I know Mr. Altmaier and Dr. Zare already started that and was great gathering some of that information internally as well as looking at some other possibilities of ensuring that we're going to get the most accurate long-term data projections. And so that's one of the things that this spring we'll want to definitely be bringing forward. Because it's hard to answer what will those homes potentially be bringing in based on a lot of various factors. And so we will definitely, we'll have that for December, but definitely will have a much more robust, Mr. Altmaier lesson we did that. It went out 10 years. Which I think there's a variety of different ways that we can review that and looking at an aggressive model of that, a moderate model of those components. So that will be definitely something that will be beneficial to the board. But again, that won't be here until later in the spring.
Yeah, and what you say is 100% accurate. I mean, I agree. I don't foresee, even though there's, or housing, it was actually, what's more encouraging is the commercial element of it. That doesn't bring kids. So that's extremely helpful. But again, we've been woefully low in that sector. And finally, hopefully, I don't even know that we're not to 10% yet. I don't think commercial industrial, are we?
Oh, no.
Yeah, which pisses us off. It's still that much residential in this community. But I think over time, as that slowly moves, it will allow us to be a little bit more flexible. I don't know that the time, I don't know that the time is now to say, oh geez, you know, we can really cut this down and almost pass, you know, 1%, no percent increases because we have a substantial financial commitment in our teachers' contract, which is probably what concerns me. There's multiple, that concerns me to be able to sustain that. And again, remembering going through the numbers when we were approving it, trying to make sure we had the build wherewithal to do it, that was one thing. I think what bothers me the most right now is the financial condition that I'm seeing with the state of Illinois. And I've heard people who are close to what goes on down there. I've seen the numbers. They see what their deficits are without the federal funding coming in at the level of buzz. And the state's going to have a hard time keeping up with their $350 million commitment on EVM. And so my concern is, I'm just not comfortable right now with where the state Illinois is going to be as far as their ability to maintain the level of funding that we've been receiving. Because it's been a lot greater than, if you would have asked me three, four years ago, I would not have thought our funding would have been as robust as it's been the last couple of years. And I just think that was helped out quite a bit with some federal help. And I don't see that happening going forward. So that's where some of my concerns lie.
Right, and I understand that. And I think those are very good points, and I agree with that. And we're not taking a vote on what the levy looks like right now. My request is just to add another option on top of the second one that we had spoken, that Mr. Bittman had spoken about with you. Just so that we have that transparency out there. And we can present the information to the public so that they can see that we're truly being thoughtful in what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Tony, you were soft with your words. And I give you a lot of credit for the grace, but bluntly put, if you shortchange today, you're shortchanging in perpetuity. There is no end. There's no opportunity to recapture. And that's always the struggle for every school district in making these kinds of decisions. It's a perpetuity decision. And the impact that you have today is going to affect it 10 years, 20 years, 50 years down the road and continue to do that. That's the impact of compounding numbers. So it's, that's often the conundrum here on which way to make a decision because of that compounding effect.
And I do want to point out, you know, I talked about the audit report, and purposely brought up, you know, our fund balance at $38.47 million. You know, that also reflects $4.1 million of reserve for replacement, okay? So minus that reserve for replacement that are committed dollars for O and M or capital projects in the future, if we need it, if we need to dip into that, that really leaves $34.43 million. And that would put our fund balance as a percentage of operating revenues at 25.5%, which is really the lowest we really want it to be. The state of Illinois has recommended fund reserve, fund balance reserve policy of 25%. They have that so that school districts, well, they don't run out of money when it comes to the months of March and April and May before property taxes come in the next year because that is our lowest point in the year of our cash balance. And the last thing we want to do as a district is issue tax anticipation warrants and have to borrow money at very high interest rates just to make payroll. And we certainly don't want to manipulate our cash flow and not pay vendors and do all those things to try to make payroll either. So the concern is, knowing how close we are to that fund balance reserve policy, we should be, you know, a 6% increase in expenses on a $133 million budget is almost $8 million, right? And so if we're increasing our expenses year over year because of wealth health insurance, because of salaries, because of, well, things, prices are going up for things, right? At a 6% uptake and an $8 million increase in expenses, well, that tells you that, well, we should be setting aside 25% of that increase. And that means, well, we're having a operating surplus, budgeting a $2.5 million operating surplus. We have been budgeted an operating surplus at 25% of that increase in costs for a long time. So over the past five or six years, we have seen our fund balance reserve come down from 35% to now where it is, it's 25%, right? And so, yes, we can do certain things, but it will impact our long-term financial ability to operate appropriately. So that, I just want to bring that up because that is something that sometimes we don't talk about and that we really need to start talking about because our fund balance has been on the decline. Even though we have an operating surplus of $900,000, well, $900,000 is nowhere close to 25% of the increase in revenues or increase in expenses that we have been seeing on an annual basis. So I just want to throw that out there as well. So that should be part of that decision-making process when we talk about this. But I have no problem throwing that together. I just wanted to ask for the board for guidance on that. And I think if there's no more questions, you can go ahead and vote on this preliminary levy for approval.
I move to approve the prelim tax in 2024. Contingent on those two options, I think that you were going to do.
Additional information.
Additional.
I'll second that.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, 14.6 electric bus purchase.
This is my last time, so I'm excited. But I'm also excited because, well, this is, you know, with the ComEd rebate potentially, and I'm feeling pretty good about it, but, well, I know I shouldn't say that. That kind of went far. I'm asking the board for approval for the electric bus purchase through Sourcewell Co-op with Lion Electric. The total amount of the PO is $1.410 million for four electric buses. I do want to note, if you have had a chance to read the memo, there was a reason we chose Lion Electric, several reasons, actually. We did have a chance, Ms. Hoover and myself and the team had a chance to go out to Lion Electric. And we really had a chance to truly understand what are the differences between the current bus we have, the Bluebird bus we have, and the Lion Electric. And so really, at the end of the day, the size and the quality of the bus, of the Lion bus, there are some big differences. The Lion bus, for instance, has a bit more aisle room as well. It's a lot more room from the driver. So when you're on that bus, you actually say to yourself, oh my God, this is great for our kids. Like, there is a lot of room in the Lion bus versus the Bluebird bus. A lot more room for the driver too, definitely versus the Bluebird bus. The other thing that I really liked about it is that the Lion bus is built with composite body panels. If you go, you look at our, a lot of our older buses, well, they're made out of steel or aluminum or whatever they make those out of, but they rust. Well, these buses aren't going to rust, okay? Because they're made out of a composite material, very strong composite material, whereas the Bluebird bus is not, right? So 10, 15 years from now, or 12 years from now, we're going to have the same issues with, you know, sometimes they don't pass the test. What's the test called? The bus, the safety lanes. When the bus goes through the safety lanes, if it's starting to rust through in certain locations, well, it doesn't pass inspection.
Through the other side?
We got to get rid of it. That's not going to happen with the Lion Electric bus. And lastly, the quote we did receive from Bluebird with co-op pricing was approximately $11,000 higher per bus. So really, at the end of the day, those two reasons also combined with the reason that we are looking in B to G. You may ask yourself, what, I thought six electric buses were going to be asked for purchase. Well, we do have the Volkswagen grant, which is going to cover 75% of the cost of the electric, excuse me, 75% of the cost of these four buses. But then there's another grant out there, the Renew America Grant from the Department of Energy, which, well, we were, we received almost two years ago. And we have yet to get the green light from the Department of Energy to go ahead and issue the purchase order for those two additional buses. With the ComEd rebate that I was referring to earlier, well, I was going to wait, but I don't want to wait anymore because I don't want to miss out on that opportunity, the ComEd rebate opportunity. So if down the road, there might be another purchase order that you'll see for two electric buses, which will be covered at 95% from the Department of Energy, that federal Renew America grant. So I did want to point that out as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but looking forward to issuing this PO and getting this ball rolling and receiving these additional four electric buses. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, you see an issue with having different styles of electric bus for maintenance standpoint further.
No, because the technology is relatively the same from the charging standpoint, from the maintenance standpoint. There's very little maintenance, right? If you have an electric car, there's very little maintenance. Now, that doesn't mean we don't sometimes have issues with those, but we do have the warranty. We have the team come out. We do have them look at it. Our shop guys have been fantastic, learning the ins and outs of whether it's the propane buses or the electric buses. But not much difference between the Lion or the Bluebird from a maintenance standpoint.
And with some of our other buses we've had, it's different manufacturers now.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
All right, I move to approve the request to purchase four electric buses in charging stations. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quaglano?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, so 14.7 payable.
No additional, Kevin.
All right. And we move to approve purchase order of count payable. And press in this person.
Second.
Mr. Bittman?
Mr. Quaglano?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
All right, 14.8 revenue contract. You have a call?
Nothing else, Dan, thank you.
All right. I move to approve the 111424 revenue contracts for various fundraising activities. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Mr. Quaglano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, 14.9 Goldbook contract, FY25. Yes. Price of talent, Mr. Altmaier. Looking to renew our contract with Goldbook to get with for the 2425 year. We've had a partnership with Goldbook for the past several years. We really spent some time this year talking about our membership with Goldbook. And there are two primary reasons why we
And there are two primary reasons why we engage with Goldbook as a resource. One is for professional development around IEP develop, the IEP development, and the other is for some tools that the platform provides for us, in particular, some progress monitoring tools that we're using to help measure goals and progress towards goals on student IEPs. So before you, there is a projected cost and two options that we explored with Goldbook. One was for a one-year contract for 240 users and an option two looked at a multi-year contract with Goldbook. Since the time that we put together the memo, we did go back to Goldbook and I just wondered if it's possible to add a third option. I don't know if that's something we can amend as an option to explore to reduce the number of users and also the cost. So I asked for an updated quote. I'm not sure if that's appropriate for me to bring forward tonight, Ms. Allmeyer.
So do you have a different recommendation of set number because we got to know what that cost and number would be?
Yeah, so the third option would also be for a one-year, but would be for up to 160 users. So instead of looking for approval on option one of the one-year Goldbook contract in the, for 82,899, we would be looking for a one-year contract for up to 160 users at 71,400.
And which one would you guys?
And we would recommend that third option, a one-year contract for the 160 users at 71,000.
Is there, is there a discount that they're offering us if we decide to do a renewal for year two, three, however long we go?
Yeah, so the cost per user goes down if we do a multi-year contract. At this time, I'm really wanting to stick with a one-year contract because we're evaluating really what we're getting from the usage, so we're tracking the usage of the tool itself and really wanting to see what other tools can accomplish potentially the same kinds of things. I think there's a lot of resources we're exploring. They don't want to engage us in a multi-year contract where we're not really certain that this contract is going to be the tool of choice for the next three years. So what we did want to do is, in terms of cost savings, we also wanted to make sure that anyone who's using it is actually using the tool. So we looked at our usage report, we surveyed staff at the start of the year to ask who is, you know, really interested in using it, who are the folks who are benefiting from it. So teachers, case managers, related service providers responded, and we had 150 staff members say they really wanted to use the tool. We looked at the usage report and found that the staff were using it. We met several times with Goldbook to just explore what additional options they have for professional development as well as some things that we're really looking to improve upon, including, in particular, our specialty design instruction and some progress monitoring tools within the system so that we can measure, for example, reading prompts for students at their grade level. So those are some things that I'm really wanting to make sure that if we're purchasing, our staff are using it for that. And I think, as Ms. Allmeyer shared earlier, we're doing our cyclical monitoring through the state. In doing that, one of the focuses we've had is on our IEP compliance, making sure that we are writing IEPs that are, that are really sound and robust. Goldbook helps us with some of that, but it also is limited in the long-term advantage of looking at actual IEP compliance. And so, having not done our internal audit of our IEPs yet, but glad that we're part of cohort one because we're going to engage in that right now, I will be curious what our recommendations after the audit really become, and that's really what I want to make sure we're emphasizing with whatever tools we're supporting. But staff are actively engaging in the use of the tool and are asking for the continued use of this tool. They have allowed us to maintain our licensure through now, but we do need to review our contract with them if we're going to allow staff to continue to use the tool. So all that said, I would, I would like to amend the, you know, the option or the memo to add a third option to explore a one-year contract for the 160 staff members.
Yeah, just amend the option. Question really quick, how long have we been using this so far?
This is our fourth year.
And, sorry, the wheels are just turning here. If we've been using it for four years, we should know what its capabilities are by now.
Yeah, so they're also adding tools along the way. So they're growing with, especially with this, there's a lot of focus on specialty design instruction, there's a lot of focus on building the platform to add additional tools, and most of our users are engaging in it for that, for the development of IEP tools, to make sure that we're writing those at grade level standards, for example, and also evolving in what tools are available to case managers to do progress monitoring. So they're evolving as well. We've always measured the staff usage, and I think last year, what we noticed is that when our staff usage was lower for some staff, we asked the question as to why. Some of it was our monitoring, right? Are we, are we really promoting it? And some of it was that staff really weren't engaging in it, it wasn't, they weren't finding it as helpful. So we really use both of those things to help us inform the engagement in the contract this year.
So as they continue to evolve and make their software more robust, we're still taking a cautious approach on the longevity of the contract?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so I move to approve the one-year contract with Goldbook toolkit contract with the amended version for 160 users, 71,400. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bibbin? Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
14.10 ISB FY25 Round 1 School Maintenance Grant Application. Mr. Lindquist?
Thank you. Recently, ISB issued a notice to school districts that they could apply for a school maintenance grant program of up to $50,000. As part of that, part of filing the process for the application, the administration must provide district certification that the local board of education approve the submission of the grant application. We, our intention is to use this fund for the high school, only high school chiller replacement project. That being said, the administration requests the board of education to approve this application by signing the back of the form. Any questions?
This is a chiller that's long overdue, right?
Longer than it's come up now.
Yeah, we talked about that offline.
Yeah.
And this is something that, you know, has become standard operating procedure for the last four or five years. You know, it's funny because this is like the only grant that the state has that requires board approval before we submit it. But there is a, there is a document that does require a board president's signature, so we do want to bring this forward to see if board approval.
Because we might turn it down.
All right. Well, I move to approve the application for the ISB FY2025 Round 1 School Maintenance Project Grant Assistant for the Omni High School Chiller Replacement Project as Permanent Improvement Project.
Second.
Do you have a roll call? Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bibbin? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
14.11.
Speaking of Humming Heights.
There we go.
Yeah.
At the August 1st meeting, the certification, review the tenure, life, like report, and deferred maintenance project, but on that list is the Humming Heights School Chiller Replacement. This chiller is 23 years old roughly. Parts are becoming obsolete, we're still running R22 refrigerant in it. Those of you who are familiar with R22, it's pretty expensive stuff right now, at roughly $32.50 a gallon. The new chiller going in to propose refrigerant is $19.80 per gallon for that refrigerant. Quite a cost, cost difference there. This chiller serves the whole east side of Humming Heights School, starting at dorm lot, so very significant area for the high school. We entertain two co-op requests for purchases from companies. The latter, the latter is the most effective way to meet this need, attaches to a proposal from Midwest Mechanical for the Omni Quadrate purchase price of $799,864. That being said, we would like to recommend the board of education to move forward with this chiller replacement. Questions on that?
With, with the age of the chiller, I'm not sure that they still make that refrigerant at all. Is that one?
They do, but it's very expensive.
Okay. I know there's some cool ones that they don't make anymore and they have to reclaim it and recycle it.
They do reclaim it.
Yeah. Can we sell the stuff that we're taking out of there?
Um, we're actually hanging on for.
Yeah.
We do have quite a few R22 equipment still left in the district that we're using for.
Okay. Any, anybody else locally using this specific model of chiller that you're able to gain any?
Yeah, we just put this, this brand in at Chesapeake.
Okay. My memory is short. Have a key trick.
Chesapeake. But this one is one of the large, it's not the largest chiller we have in the district, so hence the $799,000. Yes, go ahead.
I'll also add that Midwest Mechanical is who we use for the Marlowe Day schooling and other projects throughout the district, and they have performed exceptionally. That's one point. The second point I also want to make is, this is probably going to be a next summer insult, and because of that, this is a, this is next year FY26 capital, will be part of the capital budget for FY26. So that's already planned because that's in the tenure, deferred maintenance schedule that we walked through with Mr. Murray Kozic and Mr. Lindquist here. So I did want to note that to the board as well, this is, this is an FY26 capital purchase. But we're issuing the PO now because there is a lengthy time for, for us to receive this product.
Yeah. Like 30 weeks or something like that, really long.
All right. I move to approve the National Co-op Purchase Lion Contract, O2-91 proposal from Midwestern Mechanical Group for $799,864. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call? Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Bibbin? Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, 14.12. So we're going to appoint a delegate. So at the Triple Y Conference is here, that's for school board members that we go to every November, IASB Delegate Assembly is being held on the 23rd of November while we're down there, and we as a board choose one voting delegate representative to discuss the resolutions through IASB. And I'd like to nominate Mr. Troy, as he has done a great job in his role. Anyone else?
Everybody step back. Mr. Troy can't move. Yeah, I, I, it would be my honor to do it. I enjoy doing this, I enjoy listening to the discussion that goes on with these particular items and hearing perspectives from downstate school districts as well as those that are up here in the Chicago area. So, yeah, I, I would love to do this again.
Okay.
Second. Third. That was too fast. Oh, I changed my mind.
Yeah, totally.
Okay. So, Mr. Paul Troy, we recommend him to be appointed for the 2024 IASB delegate to the 2024 IASB Delegate Assembly on behalf of the High School District on 58. Do you have a second?
Second. Again?
Do you have a roll call? Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Bibbin? Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to work for this 2024 Delegate Assembly. Do you have, do you want to?
Yes. Sure, I would, I would love to do that. Give me a second here.
Here it is.
All right, just to provide the public some background, at the, at the conference every year that's done in Chicago with all the school districts in the state of Illinois, there are resolutions that are presented to the Association of School Boards and all the delegates, people like what I was just nominated to do, gather in order to vote on behalf of their school district whether to proceed with the resolutions that are presented or, or not. And then the Association of School Boards uses that recommendation in order to lobby on behalf of school districts across the state with legislatures, with the legislature to change laws accordingly. So this is our opportunity as a school district, as a school board, to provide that voice and have an influence on public policy. So this year, there were a bunch of them that were presented. Six of them were recommended based on the process that is done. The Association of School Boards is recommending these, or the Resolutions Committee, excuse me, recommends that these be adopted. And so, part of our process internally is to take these six and read through the logic, read through the presentation, the resolutions themselves, and then we determine whether we as a board provide that one voice through the delegate to adopt or not adopt the different resolutions. So this year's, there were six of them that were recommended to adopt. One involved dual-language educational programming. Second one was evidence-based funding, authorized charter school funding. Three was TIP accountability or tax increment financing. Fourth one had to do with a centralized state agency or FATES law. The fifth one is healthcare coverage. This one's particularly interesting and we'll probably go through this individually. And the sixth one had to do with polling places and amendment on a position statement in regards to schools being used as polling places. So as I mentioned, we had weighed in offline on a spreadsheet on how to proceed with these for the delegate voting, and most of these were actually without much fanfare. So the first one in regards to dual-language, this is for IASB to support legislation affirming the attainment of the state seal of bioliteracy, satisfying an Illinois world language requirement for graduation, and all seven of us said, yes, we should adopt this position. So there's really nothing to discuss on this. The second one has to do with the evidence-based funding or financing public education in the state. The resolution urges the adoption of CBF formula for state authorized charter schools that aligns with the funding formula used for every other public school in the state of Illinois. All seven of us agreed that this should be adopted. The third one has to do with financing public education locally, specifically a tax increment financing accountability. The resolution at hand advocating for the General Assembly and the governor to enact legislation that reforms the TIP process in a manner that is sensible, responsible, keeps communities whole, and prioritizes greater accountability. There's a lot more detail in the presentation that I'm trying to keep this kind of briefed. Safe to say that all seven of us agreed to adopt this. The fourth one has to do with FATES law. FATES law, and I might need a little bit of help with this. Essentially, it's another tool that education systems use to verify that people are, I'm going to jumble the words, but.
Vetted.
Vetted, thank you, that's the best one, for hiring within a school district, and they look at the historical nature of that vetting process. Again, all seven of us agreed that this one should be adopted. The next one had to do with healthcare coverage. The proposal was looking for the Illinois Department of Central Management Services to create a unified health plan for all school districts to opt into, to provide equitable insurance coverage to all school staff across the state of Illinois. And this one, it was resounding six to one to go ahead and adopt it. Number six had to do with polling place, and the resolution had to do with school districts should not be mandated to close on election day if none should not be mandated to close on Election Day if none of the buildings are used by students within the district to serve as polling places. And this one also was seven to oh in order to go ahead and adopt it. So not much controversy, pretty straightforward. Then there's the next block where the Resolutions Committee for IASB did not recommend adoption. There were four of these resolutions, and this is where things got a little bit fun for us. The first one...
Well, before you go for it, I want to make sure, because I think with me, we're usually not agreeing with the others, and I want to make sure I was just responding and not the double negative that this is presented in. So I want to make sure everybody was responding on the same page, because I'm not sure we were. So go ahead, but I don't know that I...
So everybody on this agreed to, yes, adopt or concur with the adoption recommendation?
No, and I'm talking about the going out of itself.
Going on, okay.
The do not adopt, which, like I said, I don't know if people were agreeing with the do not adopt or they were agreeing with the proposal being presented.
We're about to find out.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to do that.
No, the methodology used by the School Board Association always creates this consternation every year. And thank you for bringing that up. So number seven here on the list had to do with cell phone usage. There's a lengthy statement of the resolution, but really they're requesting that the Illinois Legislature consider a legislation that empowers school boards to adopt policy regarding the use of student-owned wireless communication devices. Specifically, school districts will be required to create policy that states students may not use the devices during instructional time. And so the Association or the, excuse me, the Resolutions Committee, in their analysis and with the district's rationale, did recommend not to adopt this. We had four people that said yes and three that said no, but just to be clear, are we saying, yes, do not adopt this policy?
When I was answering, I was answering in the, yeah, I would agree with the Resolutions Committee, do not adopt. I think I answered no because I was answering no to the proposal, and the proposal was that the legislature would pretty much, it says, require every school district to have this policy, and I was, and I'm not in favor. Every school being required. I would not want the state to dictate that. I want that just to be decided at the local, at the local level.
Correct.
Okay. So that's where I was on it, and I'm thinking everybody was probably in the same thing, but I don't think we're answering the same questions.
And that's why I wanted to make sure, and thank you for bringing that up, because we were split four to three on this. I want to make sure that we are accurately answering the question of do not adopt or... And this is about, so there's two parts to these four. While they are saying their recommendation is do not adopt, it is possible for these four to be resurrected at the Delegate Assembly. And so there will be a vote that says, do you want to reconsider this recommendation? And if it's reconsidered, then what is the vote of the Delegate Assembly? So if it's not reconsidered, the second part of this is moot. But if it is indeed reconsidered, then the delegates have to weigh in and say, yes, go ahead and adopt the policy or not adopt the policy. So this is a two-part on whether it will be reconsidered at all. That's the first question. Do we want to have this policy reconsidered in light of the do not adopt recommendation? What we're saying here is, yes, we want this reconsidered, and we had, it was four to three.
Yeah, I'm saying no, and I'm pretty sure the rest of them, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I'm thinking everybody's thinking the same way, but you guys tell me otherwise.
Correct.
So I think it's no to the, to what they're proposing, but it's yes to supporting the Resolution Committee to not adopt this. Okay?
So you're saying yes in the affirmative to the negative?
Yes.
That's why there's part of confusion every year.
And that was very confusing.
Yeah, it was.
Because I was looking at...
And I'm looking at you guys, and I'm going, come on, we're on the same page on this, and none of us are on the same page on the other stuff.
It was the double negative.
Yes.
Yeah. So I, like me, I said no on this because I did not want it reconsidered.
Right.
I want it left alone.
So therefore, it would be a yes sheet?
It should be a yes if you don't want it, yes, to be reconsidered.
And I'm okay with changing mine.
I'll agree.
I will change mine right now.
Yeah, you can change me.
See, that's how they get people, man. I wish this was more easier to...
So all of my answers will be, if you're willing to change it, you will reverse all my answers.
Okay. So on the reconsideration, we're saying, we're saying, yes, we don't want this. Yes, do not adopt.
We agree with the Resolutions Committee.
Yes, do not adopt. If it is reconsidered, how should we vote on this? Do we decline?
We would decline. We would not want it.
Okay.
We are on the same... I thought so. Couldn't get my head straight.
Okay.
As part of being our delegate, can you tell them just to put this in the affirmative, yes or no?
Yeah. There is a local group about exactly that point. Moving on to number eight. This one has to do with the officer of the Inspector General. Be it resolved that the IASB shall support request and encourage legislation to develop a state-funded Office of Inspector General to investigate allegations of waste, fraud, financial mismanagement, dereliction of duty, employee misconduct, and local public schools for all employees. That's the gist of it. And there's a rather lengthy rationale, et cetera, that goes on to it. However, the Resolutions Committee said do not adopt. So we as a board said five to two. Should it be reconsidered?
I'm saying no.
No.
If I said it wrong, change my answer.
Yep.
I would not want them to adopt it, and again, very simply, actually, some of this is part of our job. What we do is oversight. I do not want a government bureaucracy telling me what, how our district is either efficient and efficient. I can't even imagine. I mean, we have auditors, we just had an auditor in here today who performs a substantial financial audit. I mean, it's a waste of money and time to have a government bureaucracy. I mean, it would be like a...
Or first state...
We'll let him come in.
First state that already is short on a lot of cash to have another state agency.
Yeah.
And that's how I looked at this as well. So I did not want this to be reconsidered. And are we in concurrence with that?
Yes.
Okay. If the delegates overall vote to reconsider it anyway, should we adopt this? Should we go to adopt it?
No.
No? Okay. What I wanted to make sure. All right. Number nine has to do with FATES law. Shall request that the state legislature revise FATES law to permit individual school districts conduct employment history reviews for current employees as well as new hires. And there's the rationale that went with it, but the recommendation of the Resolutions Committee was to not adopt this. And we had a resounding no on this.
Yes. No. No. Yes.
Which means we do want reviews. Yeah. Correct. Like the Zara World, man. All right. So should this be reconsidered?
No.
No? No. Okay. And if it's reconsidered, we don't want it adopted then?
Okay. I'm going to look at it.
All right. And then last one in this group, criminal background checks being reconsidered. Be it resolved that the IASB shall require all school board candidates to have a criminal background check before they submit their petitions. That's the gist of it. So this was not recommended for adoption, and we all voted in agreement with that, not adopt. If it's reconsidered, we're saying, don't adopt it all the same. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then there were other ones that were at the back. There were just three of them. These do not get presented for reconsideration, so there was no point else even voting on them.
Correct.
So that is this year's resolutions listing. Thank you for indulging 20 minutes of time.
If I move, yeah, Mr. Paul Troy, to leave the discussion of the 2024 IASB Delegate Assembly proposal and resolution. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Bivin? Mr. Quaglano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Moving on to number 15, public comments. Three more?
Yeah.
Come on. Come on.
Sure.
Rest of the podium.
My comments concern the discussion on the tax levy.
Excuse me. Can you press the button on the microphone there?
My notes.
There we go. Yeah.
My comments have to do with the discussion on the tax levy. I think as I pointed out earlier, I did spend some time as a school board member and deep paid guy, so I know maybe just a little bit about some of this stuff that goes on. Anyway, my comments, several as follows. Mr. Altmeier, I don't think I've ever run across a CFO in a school district who's never always asked for the maximum revenue. Would you stay true to that? Mr. Quaglano made a comment about the wool, the timing of the levy in the EAV. I'm aware of that. I know it's a conundrum in school boards and for many years. Mr. Troy made a comment about the sky will fall if we don't get maximum funding levy. We'll be doomed in the future. Probably took some of that out of context, but I don't agree, respectfully don't agree with that. It appears that there's been a windfall of new construction EAV. I think you're going to be addressing that. That is truly a windfall, especially with the commercial EAV that's coming in County. I also don't agree with Mr. Quaglano's fear of state funding. Now, that's always thrown out every single year, and the legislature always comes through and... Another point to keep in mind when we consider the levy, just had a part district referendum here in Huntley that tapped very strongly. There will be a tax for the... I wanted to, and I'm sure this probably has occurred, but none of it came up in the discussion with it, about the expense side of the budget and the revenue. Talk about revenue, revenue, revenue. I don't know, not aware of the cuts that have been made in the school district budget. Always need more money, but usually proper financial management, gotta take a look at costs as well. So I would appreciate the board would do that. I also would respectfully request a meeting with Mr. Altmeier to further review the levy of the... Here. That concludes my comments.
All right. No more comments. Moving on to 16, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yeah. 9:38. Can I get a second?
Yeah.
On paper?
Aye.
That's it.
Yep. All right. Yep. On the day, whatever day you commit it. Yeah. Okay. Can I hold on a minute?
I wanted to...
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Thank you.